Okay, let's all rise and pledge the flag to open the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everybody. We're here now in the month of August, and we're opening up our regular monthly meeting, and it looks like we're ready to go. Tonight, you'll notice that regular village clerk's not here. We have substitute, our assistant, Ari Drew, who's helping. Cindy's on vacation. But let's get started with the regular things, anyway. Looking at the agenda, first there's minutes approval. I know I reviewed them digitally and didn't know if anybody else had any additions, alterations, or corrections. Perhaps one we should look at now. This week, we do have, of course, this meeting, then tomorrow, we have a special public session, public hearing, and then this is the week that our workshop also falls on. And I don't recall canceling the August workshop. I know we canceled July for vacation season and so forth. I thought we'd be better sort of by keeping it open in case we need to fill in something. One item on the agenda is, I'm thinking it's a small piece, but it's the zero-to-one mower, which we probably can address tonight, but if anybody had any questions. And then I thought if something arose at the public hearing tomorrow that we need to deal with on a short timeline, and that's why I do not recall canceling the August meeting, but I'm not sure the August workshop meeting. I don't know if we all concur on that, but I don't think it appeared in the minutes as a canceled event, so that being said, if people want to think for a moment. And then as far as any additions, alterations, or corrections, if they have any. So I move that we accept the minutes, and like we said, it was only one meeting in July, July 9th, so I ask for approval of those meetings. Is there a second?
Aye.
One favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And in the absence of the clerk, who's also the treasurer, I'll do the treasurer's report. We still have that positive number as of the 13th of August, that we have in general fund $1,098,000. We, like we said, like the ring of that. And water fund is $188,215. Trust and agency, $32,273. Materials management, $3,007. Petty cash, $63.80. Village Green, $4,404. Hardscrabble, $10,481. Health insurance, $4,302. Switching to expenses that are in the voucher piles tonight there, in general fund, $390,865. I'll pause here and just put it in parentheses. When you're going through the vouchers, you will see that includes the $150,000 building principal payment, which is a once-a-year item. It includes the interest toward the building, which is a twice-a-year number. And then it also includes the 60% of the fire protection contract money, which is roughly $60,000. So between what, that's about $240,000 right there. So even though that number is big and jumps out, that's the reason. In the water fund expenses, weren't too bad. $36,708. Trust and agency, $32,273. Materials management, $4,352. As always, the detailed report is attached, and we would ask that the vouchers make it up and down. I think Brent and I have signed them already, but if you folks could get them done before the night is over, that'd be good. There's also a sewer packet voucher on top there. Looking over the numbers, I would move that we accept the treasurer's report as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Any thoughts, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Holding the floor for a moment, police report, fire report. We had something stamped in, received August 8th from the software package from the fire company, but lo and behold, upon review, it's really the June data, it's not the July data. So they're not here at the moment, but they did reach out today, and they understand they will bring us the July data. They'll probably drop it off, so we don't have that specific report at the meeting. When they do drop it off, I'll put the numbers in that spreadsheet we're compiling, and we'll get that off to you. Village board for the monthly police report, month of July, incidents for 335. Breaks out 232 in a village, 98 in the town of Red Hook, and five in the village of Tivoli. Resulting tickets were 166. Village of Red Hook had 99 of those, with two parking tickets. Town of Red Hook had 67 tickets. Arrests were 33. The breakout was 20 in the village of Red Hook and 13 in the town of Red Hook. As far as other brackets in my lines there, with personnel, I do have an executive session slated tonight on personnel. Insurance, we've had, our policies are all renewed, and things are looking well, looking good there. And I'll touch on other things as they come up. With that being done, I would say, Mr. Trustee Trapper, are you planned and zoned, ready to go there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Somewhat brief for me tonight. Case has been brisk. The Dutchess County Planning Federation, we are still working toward our set of fall courses. We've had one meeting where we have outlined maybe six or eight courses. It will be sort of culled down to three, maybe four. Mostly Department of State going to handle the presentations. We, let's see, nominated the board again. It was time, and that will be handled. I was nominated for president again, Mike McCormick, vice president, and let's see, flanking on the rest of them, and that'll be handled at our next meeting, which we have a business meeting during one of our presentations. Let's see, what else? We were looking to maybe spring for a little more money. We've been making, well, making, we've been collecting more than we've been spending, so we've talked to the controller and find out whether we can keep such amounts of money. And we're not sure if we have to get rid of it. We may hire a sort of bigger, more prominent person to come do a presentation at one of our classes, so it should be fun. Prices will still be the same for everybody, five bucks with food, so it's not so bad. Jump onto the village. You know, some time back, we adjusted our fee schedule, and it appears to be bearing fruit here. So for the monthly report, July, we collected $2,593 into the building department, which is nice, the village could use that. We would love to have the building department cover itself. Not quite there, I don't think, but we're working toward it. We had nine building permits issued, four certificates of occupancy issued, five certificates of compliance issued, two municipal searches were conducted, two orders to remedy, one stop work order, and there were a number of fire inspections conducted the past month. Anybody interested, you can request and see the report for those. Planning board had one item of business assigned approval, and the ZBA. Sorry, George, no business, but such as it is. I think that's about it. I'm just excited. We are moving toward hardscrabble. Always enjoy that time.
Good. Thank you. When you're talking about, in your intro part, about your county planning federation, how is that funded? By municipal dues?
It is only by municipal dues.
And they're minimal, right?
We collect nothing from the county. It's 100 bucks per municipality, and we come close to covering, I mean, we clear about 30 or 40 bucks every time, you know, between the $5 per person coming in and the cost of the food, which is about six bucks, you know, going out. We, I misspoke, we lose just a little bit, but the money coming in from the municipalities kind of keeps us afloat, and we occasionally have to do some other things, rent a building for some, a presentation or something like that. So we've got a little money, and we've been sort of hanging on to it for quite some time. So as some of you recall, we used to do big awards presentation and have big boys and eat at really fancy food at fancy places, but that was all kind of ended, and so that's why we have a little bit of surplus, and we're probably, we had tried to get Tom Lowe, I think his name was, Dwayne, he played his Ziburt guy, and it didn't work out, but we're thinking of maybe getting a more prominent planner or somebody like that to come in, you know, cost us three or four grand maybe to get him up here and do a thing, so it should be fun. I'll keep you guys abreast of that if it should happen.
Thank you. And one thing on the money coming in, the J report, a good chunk of it was the fire inspections, looks like one of the commercial locations, KDK, got done. And then I do know, yeah, we read the controller's weekly reports that we get, the color stuff that we circulate around. So they were gigging some municipalities where they're not staying up to calendar currency on their annual and their triannual reports, but our guys are staying on that, and I think some of that is the driver here.
Don't be fooled if you don't see it, because if you haven't turned in like your annual report, and then you do, it may not actually show on the site for a couple of years. They're a little tardy about upgrading some of the stuff.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, Jay.
Yep.
Let's see, we could go, Trustee Norris, are you ready to speak?
Do the fun stuff first.
Okay.
You mentioned Hardscrabble Day, which is coming around the corner Saturday, September 15th. We can announce our band, which is "The Weight," which is an offshoot of "The Band." That's like a circular sentence right there. The band did the song "The Weight" among other songs.
Many, many.
So is it a band-band?
It's a band-band. We get the band.
I know, it's a little confusing when you tell people, "The Band."
It's on first.
Yep.
And then, as usual, we'll have food, kids events, and vendors all day with our parade at 4:30. This year's theme is "Red Hook Cares," focusing on what makes our community a great place to live. For more information, go to hardscrabbleday.wordpress.org. New this year, vendors will not be placed by us along the main roadway. We're kind of encouraging merchants to come out and do their own thing, so our vendor fee this year will be lower than it's been previous years. It's only going to be 25 bucks, and you have your choice of Key Bank Lawn or Memorial Park. So it's a great, you know, if you are a hobbyist who makes jewelry or whatever, probably a good time to try it out.
Go public.
Go public. But in the meantime, this Saturday, August 18th, is a sunflower festival in the village from 11 to 6, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and local merchants. There will be specials and demos with the sunflower theme. For more information, go on Facebook or contact the Chamber of Commerce. And now the fun stuff, materials management. As we know, this ongoing saga with single stream recycling, they did raise their tonnage rate this past month. It used to be 20 bucks, now I think it's 75, 73?
Yeah.
I didn't write it down.
76 it was, which includes, yes, that's it.
So you can see on the spreadsheet that our amount paid out was higher, just because they've raised the rate. So we're still working on what do we do now, and you know, going back to co-mingled, and does that mean, you know, the first Monday of the month is newspaper? We need to figure it all out, so we are working on that. But in the meantime, our numbers, we sold $3,902.25 in tags and paid out $1,262.35. We had 11.7 tons of garbage and 6.2 tons of single stream recycling. Why is that? My numbers aren't adding up. Sorry, we paid out $1,748.42.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Yeah, like Jen was saying, today, when I was working in the office, the barge students rolling in, and they're starting to buy the tags and get familiar with our garbage program. We will have to sit just to repeat, and for the board, how would we best have a cycle that people can remind themselves or remember today's newspaper day? Because like we said, the big market really is in the news print part, as far as that's what everybody wants to recycle, as far as the market wants to do with that. The co-mingled have kept clean is okay, but when they get all combined out in single stream, that's the problem. And we've talked with the highway folks a little bit. It looks like it's probably going to head for a certain day of the month is paper, because it's more stable, and you can probably store it better without creating odors and different things in your cans and bottles and so forth. But I think we'll brainstorm a little more, because the way we would get it out there is through newsletters, really the only true way. And right now, with Jen's timeline, which you were talking about, that rate increase has occurred, but then as of December 31st, they won't even take it as single stream anymore, so we have to probably be in the next, yeah. Yeah, so it's on. Anyway, well, thank you, Jen. Charlie, welcome back. And we did circulate a water report, if you had a chance to see.
Yes, you did.
Came off from the operator, and it looks like they also gave us what you were asking for, the actual day-by-day, like second sheet there, instead of just composite averages. So we can see, because it does look like more water was used, but I won't steal your thunder. You want to go ahead there?
Well, I know, it is, it's a little shocking.
Yeah.
I mean, I wasn't around last month, and the water usage rose relatively, relatively rose quite a lot last month, and that incline continued into last month. When I said last month, last month, that was the one.
June, June.
But anyway, so during the month of July, the water treatment facility treated over 7 million total gallons, averaging 227,400 gallons per day, and that's quite a jump. I mean, that's almost back into the sort of pre-improvement, new mains, new lines. So that would be a concern. I have to assume that June, July, I mean, it was very hot, there was probably a considerable amount of that was, you know, garden usage, people trying to keep their plants going. I do have anecdotal evidence that there were some German exchange students in town that liked to shower many times a day, so that possibly might have impacted the water usage as well. I can't say.
They did in my house.
There we go. I mean, I think it's enough of an increase that we should, you know, ask our operations guys, you know, what they think is going on, what, why is this?
People fill their pools, are they filling their pools with our water, or no?
I don't think usually.
Okay.
I think, I mean, usually, you would have a company come by and, you know, do a pool fill, but...
Yeah, to answer more specifically, you're right, most people use an outside contractor, but if you use us, we have a separate charge and everything, so it's a, but people could be topping off, you know, not a total fill, but...
Right. And we also, let me just mention, we had, as we regularly do, three samples sent out for bacteriological testing. They all came back negative, and we used as part of our water treatment, 60 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and so that average daily use was 1.93 gallons a day, and that's right in line with our usage. But the total volume of water is, you know, is relatively high.
So we will talk to the operator and see.
Yeah.
On page two on the footside, I did meet with the operator, our engineer, recently at the well fields, and trying to get what they call that SCADA system ready to decommission the elevated tank, and they have set these deadlines for all parties, and they're working on it. Still not decommissioned, though. And I was talking with Ari today, she pretty much coordinates a lot of the administrative side of the water in-house, and we're just looking at, you know, the Badger Meter Company is going to be switching monitoring system instead of radio read, it'll be like new software we needed, and a few things like that. So it's, but we do have that in our budget. As far as the SCADA, unfortunately, we do have a budget there that's got enough to keep it going, and we're just trying to figure out, it's a highly technical relationship between the software, the pumps, the controls, and the consumption, so it's really something that we really need the operator, which is VRI, and the engineer, and the technical firms to just get it together, figure it out, and get it done. It's all functioning, but it's just not totally the way we want it, which makes me think a little bit of, you know, looking at the daily reports here from Charlie's report, like, there's a few days in the middle of July where we used over 300,000 gallons, and then the other day seemed to be 214, 210, 212. So curious, as we try to pinpoint, you know, what was happening July 14th and 15th, like, is there something on that, those two days? Because most of the other days seem more in sync with our normal consumptions. We'll have to see, was there some work done? And I may have just answered my question as we talked, Mr. Charles. We do hydrant flushing, and I'm pretty sure he was out before I went away. Do any dates come to your mind, Ari?
The 23rd through the 27th.
He was out too, or, let's see?
It was probably actually through the 29th.
Yeah, but those aren't too wildly off.
No. Some of the bigger days were before that.
Yeah, 14 and 15, and it looks like...
Well, if you have German showering and you're flushing the hydrant.
Yeah.
So that's a bad combination.
But it does run some water that gets metered at the main site, and we don't get paid for it at the customer end, so, but we'll check into that a little bit more. Thank you. Anything else on your side there? I guess Charlie had one thought slash question for you. We're looking at the LED project still, and NIPA wants us to sign, I think I have the document here as far as...
Contract, and I mean, you'd had our attorney look that over.
Yeah, and he, like we said, the last meeting, it's really just, he wanted us to be aware they do charge a handling or processing fee, not coming up the right word there, but it's not ongoing.
Administration.
Yeah, and then what they're asking us to sign is, a little sticky in here, authorization to proceed, which is in line with the contract to, doesn't cost us any money, but it's where they're actually getting into the design and the actual work for our system.
And I presume one of the next steps would be an inventory, that they would do.
My sense is, we've discussed this multiple times, I see no reason not to go ahead. You've been point person, pretty much.
Yeah, no, I think that's correct. I mean, we're still going to see significant cost savings with a payback, with a return in, you know, three, four years.
Right.
It just, I mean, even with a small administrative fee to NIPA, I think it still makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, because this letter, they say, the cost of developing the design and bidding the materials and labor is estimated to be $7,405. So I think it'd be money well spent. Maybe we get to the regular business, I'll add this as an agenda item, and we can authorize signature. Let's see, looks like we're ready for Deputy Mayor Brent Kowalczek. Are you ready there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. The current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of July 31st are as follows. Community beautification, we have $4,000. Chay tree contractual, $10,500. And the Village Green Committee checking account, $4,404.33. There are no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of July. The village sent out letters notifying property owners with trees on a joint village or New York State DOT right-ofways. They were mailed on July 27th. There were nine property owners with 15 trees in total that we notified property owners that these trees are being considered for either pruning or removal by the Red Hook Village Highway Department. And property owners do have the option to appeal the recommended action. If that does occur, the Village Green Committee and Highway Department will review and seek recommendations from a certified arborist for verification and appropriateness of these recommended actions. So we gave the, the letters had a 10-day period where you could make a response. So far, we've heard of no one objecting or questioning. We did hear from one requesting a new tree, and so next week, probably the week of the 21st, I believe, we'll start with the pruning and removal of the trees. We did receive an estimate from Dave's Tree Service to prune and remove the trees along the Village of New York State DOT right-ofways and the property based on the list provided, just mentioned. The cost of $8,150 will be deducted from the general fund chay tree contractual expense budget line. So I think I did give you all an attachment of the estimate. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report for July, the Village Highway Department is currently picking up lawn debris and brush every first and third Monday of the month, scheduled weather permitting. Sometimes they wait till Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on their load. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris curbside and place brush, lawn debris, and grass clippings in separate piles, and please limit the size of the piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with branches no larger than six inches in diameter. And please do not include tree trunks and debris from tree maintenance performed by commercial contractors and/or professional tree maintenance companies. A letter was received by the village from the New York State DOT notifying the village of the current balances of the New York State fiscal year 2018 CHIPS apportionments. The current balances, we did drop a little bit, because we used some money to pay for the truck. For the CHIPS, we had $52,000, almost $53,000 paved in New York. We have $18,380 in the extreme winter recovery fund. We have $7,183.48. An estimate was received by the village from Easy Street Cleaning for the repainting of 79 stop bars, eight crosswalks, three handicap parking, six sheroes, and parking spaces in the municipal parking lot, including designations of the two EV charging stations that we have, and they've already been done and painted. The estimated cost of $4,620 will be deducted from the general fund maintenance of streets, contractual expenses, and street maintenance. An estimate was also received by the village from Red Hook Paving and Sealing to remove grass and weeds from cracks, edge and prep, and grade seal approximately 4,400 square feet of sidewalk at Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. The estimated cost of $1,100 will be deducted from the general fund maintenance of streets, contractual expenses, and street maintenance. The village also received an estimate from Frank Bosberg and Sons to repair and or replace catch basins on Cambridge Drive, West Market Street, and Fisk and Elizabeth Street intersection. The estimated cost of $9,050 will be deducted from the CHIPS budget line, and I believe we're paying for some of the materials, so this is just the labor costs. Revenue from sales scrap metal was received by the village on July 12th in the amount of $443. Total revenue generated this fiscal year is $651. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2017... Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $26,649.17 has been generated. And proceeds from this program do go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Material Management's Department. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Village Highway Department at 758-8600, or the Village Clerk's Office. And highway personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The task force and the infrastructure monthly report. I'll start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held on July 13th and 20th in the Red Hook Village Building, and we discussed the collection, review, and signing of easements from property owners within the sewer service area. A total of 135 easements from 127 properties must be collected and signed before the project goes out to bid. Property owners who have not submitted easements may be subject to proceedings to acquire easements through the authority of New York State and Red Hook Village laws. Mailings to property owners and listings in the Daily Freeman will be issued, I believe they have been issued, to notify property owners that a public hearing has been set for tomorrow, Tuesday, August 14th at 7:00 PM. A typo there. In the Red Hook Village Building to listen to concerns regarding the initiation of eminent domain proceedings. Catherine Sarah, who's our representative of CT Mail, met with the Dutchess County Department of Health on July 11th to review the proposed project. And we have a few outstanding items to take care of, including the USDA Rural Development Letter of Conditions, the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation response to comments, and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, documents for the acquisition of the Red Hook Commons wastewater treatment plant, regarding the transfer of the existing speedies permit, a possible onsite surveys to fully assess impacts on biological resources, and a determination by SHPO as a requirement of complete application for any New York State DEC permits for modification or expansion. And we still have to secure all the easements and review and approve, approval by the New York, Dutchess County DOH is still pending. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two meeting was held on July 13th. It was a very busy meeting. A conference call was conducted with Daniel Birmingham of Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood. There are bond council to review closing document and tax certifications. And we also had a conference call with Gretchen Pinkel of USDA Rural Development to schedule the closing of the Red Hook Water Project Phase Two. The interest rate for the $1,441,500 loan is currently at 3.125% for 38 years, and this is down from 3.25% from our letter of conditions. So when we submit all of our required conditions in the letter of conditions report, the interest rate cannot go above the 3.2. If it goes down, we'll take the lower one, but it can never exceed the 3.25%. So we got lucky, it actually went down a quarter of a percentage point, which does help. The total project cost of $1,441,500 was reduced from the original cost of 3.8 million by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant of $2.28 million. A pre-closing date of August 20th and a closing date of August 22nd was set and will be completed by mail. We also had a conference call with Aileen Andres of New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to notify the EFC of the scheduled closing dates and to review the process to transfer funds from USDA to the EFC to repay EFC for the short-term financing the village received during construction. The amount to be repaid, again, is $1.4 million with a 1.95% interest rate payable by the Village of Red Hook. That was for short-term financing. And that, lastly, we did have a conference call with Beth Ferguson of Capital Markets to notify Capital Markets of the scheduled closing date and the amount of the USDA loan, including the current 3.125% interest rate, and to determine and review the amortization rate. The loan will reach final maturity, this is kind of scary, actually, on January 8th, 2055. So 38 years. The Red Hook Village Zoning Review Committee, the Village Board of Trustees approved Local Law Number Two of 2018 on June 21st, placing a four-month moratorium on all applications and permits for demolition of a structure over 120 square feet, and for the establishment, expansion, or modification of a motor vehicle service station in the General Business District of the Village of Red Hook. The village submitted recommendations to the Board of Trustees on May 21st and review by the Dutchess County Department of Planning as forthcoming. I don't know if we received anything yet from planning. It's been sent out for a while. And a New York State Consolidated Funding Application for the Mid-Hudson Region, New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Green Innovation Grant Program, grant application was submitted on July 25th. A feasibility study for an innovative multi-use green parking lot was also submitted. The proposed green infrastructure plan includes pores, asphalt, bioretention, and vegetation treatment of runoff with stormwater trees for the village-owned municipal parking lot on South Broadway and Prince Street. The proposed $476,000 project will also include enhancements to support community events such as electric upgrades and expansion to the support buildings to provide a canopy to pedestrians and event participants. On this report, the task force was enlisted, but Charlie and I represent the village on the task force, which meets every Friday at the town hall. And we're currently reviewing bed and breakfast regulations and trying to propose something to regulate those a little bit more. On the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, Ed is the Red Hook Village Board liaison. EDC meetings were held on July 10th and 24th in the Red Hook Public Library. The discussion centered around updates on the village sewer project and other village issues, updates from the Research and Development Subcommittee regarding meeting dates and goals for the next two months, updates from the Marketing Subcommittee, and the Communications Subcommittee. They also discussed the Northern Dutchess Alliance's blueprint for economic development. There were no meetings for the Red Hook Town Zoning Review Committee, which I'm a member of, also no meetings for the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. But the current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of July 31st is $1,088,350.58. The Northern Dutchess Alliance, which I am a new member of, a meeting was held on July 13th in the Red Hook Village Building. We discussed what the Northern Dutchess Alliance can do on a regional level to engage communities regarding focusing on economic development opportunities, funding mechanisms, and increased patronage both by locals and tourists. And our next meeting in September, we'll reach out to the local EDCs, Chamber of Commerce's, and other local communities and groups within the Northern Dutchess area. I'm also working with the Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group update. We had our second meeting on July 24th at the town hall. We are considering expanding the list of areas covered under the regulations of the Red Hook LWRP, which is the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. Possible areas may include water resources, wetlands, rivers, creeks, tributaries to the Hudson River, historic resources, biodiversity connectivity, and protected farmland, et cetera. We did review the introduction synopsis of the current LWRP, and we reviewed the historic establishment of the New York State, by New York State, of the local waterfront revitalization plans. And that is it.
Okay, good. Thanks. Just one thought, just to clarify, as Brent's reading, some things go together. I just want to, when we're talking about that $476,000 project for the village parking lot, that is the subject of a grant application. I just want to make sure people understood that, if we're not budgeting-
Yeah, it won't happen without the grant.
And the deadline was, what, about three weeks ago or so, the filing? And so we'll hear a couple of months on that. And then another thing more whimsical, I put up on the board, people in the audience probably know our highway foreman, and this is too much, I was on vacation and the admin staff sent me this, but, you know, we did the EV charging station. And those that know Dan, don't know him, well, we would not expect him to be dancing in the parking lot, but there he was. Yeah, I think he's very proud of his, the new icons in the lot. And this is another small thing, but related to it all. You all might remember, we have belly one and belly two out in that lot for the past five years, where you park and you get out into a puddle in the staff area, and it's always a hassle when we're doing celebrations too, and different events where people have to walk through it. We did finally get that flattened out. They came in and used an outside helper and themselves, and they got it, it's really nice right now in a heavy range, you can park and you're not angled into a puddle and you can get in here. But, so I'd like to thank the highway guys for doing all that. It was nice to come back and see that. And the stop bars and different things Brent mentioned, you know, we budget that every couple of years, and just dresses up things a little bit, I think, makes it safer, but it makes it look a lot nicer, too. So, but I couldn't resist, and Dan will probably hate me tomorrow for this, but, Dan, if you're out there, probably watching. Let's see. As far as, as Brent said, tomorrow night, we have another meeting, the board here, we'll be working on that tomorrow. I think we could switch to regular business. I don't want to have bus stops. The good news is, the work is done, the actions we took have resulted in changes in the bus route. We have modified our code. We've created two bus stops, is all that BARD says they want, one right in front of Village Hall here and one across the street. Highway has obtained the appropriate signs, and BARD gave us a barge shuttle sign, too, so the students can kind of know where to congregate at the same time. So it's not just a generic sign out there, it's, they can see it. And it's good, we have room there for them. We have, like we said, if we need it, we have security cameras and so forth that pick up the areas and gets them, the buses off the problematic route that was bothering the residents on the side streets. So I think that's good work, and we all, we did that in about 60 days or so, required some code changes, and we got that done. I could probably switch for a moment, the fire company has sent their representative, Fred Cartier is here. I don't know if he wanted to say anything, but you're welcome to say anything, but he, looks like he has a report in his hands. And Fred, maybe if we could just hand this down to Jay and turn it on? It should be on, Jay.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, this is the report for July. We had 98 calls, we were a busy month, a lot of rain and a lot of other stuff out there. And it just, it's not broken down because it's just off depressed.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Any questions?
So you said 98? So that is, that's a little heavier than a normal month.
It's a little heavier than normal, right.
Good.
Were they using our water, and that increased the water?
Good question. We were doing a water report earlier, and our consumption was up a little bit, and we're trying to decipher why, but I know of no big fires, so that's-
No, we didn't have any major structural fires at all.
That's good. Well, thanks for coming in with that, and we appreciate it. Okay. You can hand it to Jay, and he'll pass it down, and-
Both of them, there we go. Cool.
Thanks. Talk to you later. That's good. Maybe Ari could get that for- Okay. And then, let's see. Number two in your packets, I made a copy of some LoSAP data. This is the benefit program that the village and town of Red Hook provide to the volunteers within the fire company. But the test is, they have to make a certain amount of fire calls, meetings, training, and it looks like there's even a miscellaneous category. It's a highly regulated program, meaning it's approved by the state of New York, and we essentially invest money into what others would call 401K types program. But the firemen do have to prove who from their roster met the qualifications. If you look at the far right on the sheet, you have to make at least 50 points. And what they've done on the handout they gave us is, they checked who made it. And what they do is, they post this within their four walls, so their members can look and contest, or agree, or whatever they have to do internally. Then they send it to us. The one problem you might recall is, we've been pushing them, we like to get this more in the spring season, so it comports with certain things we do with budgets and so forth. We have a pretty good idea on the history of how they attend and how they qualify, how many qualify for the benefits. But this just came into us July 18th. So what we have to do is look it over, and then we sign a form. Like I said, it's all driven by state regulations and so forth. They gave us signed forms from their area and putting them out for people on the board to see. Then there's one called the sponsor approval form, and we are the sponsor since we're, in a sense, the mother entity for the fire company. It references Article 11A of the New York State General Municipal Law requires that a list of volunteers who earned a year of service credit during 2017, which is correct, that's the last year's work, be certified under oath by the fire department, and submitted to the program's sponsor. The program's sponsor must then review and approve the 2017 firefighting records listing. So what we would do is, looking it over, we're not in there day-to-day, but looking at the names, it looks like the people we see and we know as far as the active local people, and we have to rely on their attendance and their record-keeping. We do, as part of the state law, have to audit the LoSAP data, so we do get a retroactive look at it. But the audit doesn't happen at this time of the year. It's, and the audit involves the effectiveness of the investment programs and different things over and above just point qualifiers. But I think what I would like to do, this, the 2017 sponsor approval form and the 2017 sponsor authorization form are in our packet. And in the end here, I'd like to craft a motion that we state that we reviewed the fire company's submission received here July 18th. We accept their data, and we'd like to move it forward toward processing with our financial people and complete the sponsor approval form and the service award program form. The longer-serving board members will recall that, we use a company called Penflex, that's a company that administers and coordinates the investments. We don't actually mail and select the financial institutions that hold the money for them. We rely on outside services. So anyway, I gave the overview of a motion. Does everybody feel comfortable? I'd rather do it tonight because it's July, we got it, and I'd like to get this some paid, you know, processed, because what happens is, when we send the list off, we then get the estimate of what it's going to be actually, the check we have to write to Penflex. And then what we do have is, like I said, historically, these names tend to be the names we saw, and the qualifying amount tends to be about the same number of folks qualifying. So I don't see any big disturbance in our budget process or anything. So I offer as a motion, I don't know if Ari's ready or right there, but that the Village of Red Hook acknowledged, received the Red Hook Fire Company LoSAP qualification forms received here July 18, 2018. The village has reviewed it and would authorize the mayor to sign the 2017 sponsor approval form, and also to sign the sponsor authorization form so that we can begin the financial processing and complete the LoSAP certifications. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? One in favor? Let's see. Planning board vacancy. Planning board vacancy. See, one of our regulars has come to the meeting and we've been talking and you, the board might recall about four or five months ago, we were anticipating a vacancy in July with the resignation pending of Mark Morando. And that did happen. He resigned in writing in the month of July. And I'd indicated back then that Steve Zarchuk, our village resident, was interested in serving the village in that capacity. I think he still is. I don't know if he wants to shake his head yes or no out there. He's a little ambivalent looking actually, but can you hear me? So I guess before I make a motion or anything, are, still good? Okay. We, we knew we wanted to do it, we just needed the timing to come properly. Steve knows the village, he served on this board and he was on a planning board once. And he brings a lot of care and time and attention. So it's a pretty active board. It's not like his cohort at ZBA where they don't meet that often, but it's a monthly meeting. So your schedule's still good, Mrs. Zarchuk? Like it's, evening meetings are good for you? Okay. So with a vacancy existing and we had talked about this earlier, with my authority and position as mayor, I get to appoint, but with consensus of the board, you know, we don't go rogue or anything. So, but in my opinion, Steve has proven, he works and he cares about the village and that's what we want on a board. And he knows a lot of the issues, he attends a lot of our meetings, so he knows the big picture and.
Who's this guy?
Yeah. But anyway, so that being said, I would make a motion that we fill a vacancy and acknowledge the service of Mark Morando, but appoint Steve Zarchuk to a term on the village planning board. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think it'd be a good fit and we'd welcome you back. So are you, I think you're shaking your head out there or we'll send you a letter in certain formalities, but one in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, board. New highway mower. When Dan was dancing in the parking lot, he was also talking about the heavy rain causing the grass to grow incessantly, which I can attest to. I was gone two point, two and a half weeks, usually in August when you go where you come back to brown dead lawns. This time I came back to like 12 inches of grass. I was like, oh my goodness. So he's.
It's against the.
Yeah, 10 inches.
It's against property maintenance code. I just thought.
I was like, good thing I didn't go for three weeks, I'd be like victim of my own administration. But, but anyway, where am I looking for? Oh, I'm looking, go to the right folder here. I think we've talked about it briefly in prior meetings and then also maybe in a workshop, but they had looked at some bids locally and through the New York State contract, but that, I mean, John Deere is on the state contract and, and then they're handling and sold by Keel Equipment here in Red Hook. And then Conway's is, remember we did the piggybacking endorsement where we can do, we can piggyback off other contracts and so forth? We did that about six months ago as far as bid processes and so forth. And Conway's sells through that project where we can get contract prices through them. And we joined, I think Ari joined us on the buy board or HGAC buy board, it's, which makes us eligible, it's not a cost factor for us, we get to be able to be listed on that and essentially gives us state contract capabilities when we're looking at things. The highway folks are recommending and in particular the foreman, there's a brand called a Ferris, which is sold by Conway's and it's a 37 horsepower, 61 inch deck. And Dan was pitching a little bit today, someday in the future, we hope to have that solar farm array down there and this, a little more horsepower, he's thinking he can get a little more mowing done in between the rows and so forth. It was a good sales pitch by him, I was teasing about that a little bit, but, but it looks like with, I don't know if it's going to be this way every summer, but with the grass growing cycle right now, they're spending way more time mowing. So he'd like to keep the old John Deere that they have and he feels that the market value of that's only about a thousand dollars. So I don't think we necessarily want to go into surplus, it might be better to have around this.
Is it still functional?
Yeah, so the deck's about worn out, so it's, he doesn't think anybody's really going to want to buy it, but it still functions. And they're pretty good at repairing and welding and metal works, I think. I'm going with their word on that we need a new one. We could do the workshop if you wanted to look through this packet. The bottom line is, when you, the Ferris pre-contract pricing is one dollar shy of $12,000. Then they give the discount on the state contract of $2,160. Which brings it down to $9,839. That's for a 37 horsepower. A 31 horsepower John Deere is $9,500, call it, yeah, 9,500 versus 9,800. So it's $300. And then they get into some miscellaneous equipment, but it's, their preferences, the Ferris, and we have found that they're the guys that use them day in, day out, they seem to know what horsepower demands they should have under their, under their hood.
Can we make a motion to approve this? Because I did submit these estimates back at last trustees meeting in July. So the trustees should have had time to review.
Could you just recap them for me, Brent, there? This is from, from your last month's meeting?
Yeah, this was in the month report for June, but it was presented at the July meeting.
So you did break it down, where we're getting the money from and so forth?
Yeah, well, the money basically would come from our, our capital. Also, I did not break it down as far as the money goes.
Let me just grab the minutes.
I mean, we probably would have to do that. It may, some come from water since we're doing the well field. I do, we brush hog that and that's under separate contract.
Could, could you read that paragraph for me, please?
The highway department is, has received three estimates from local vendors for a new zero turn lawnmower. Estimates range from $9,200 to $9,839. Government contract prices are also being investigated. And then with that, I did submit the quotation from Conway's for the Ferris, IS3200, $9,839. Also from Conway's, the total zero turn 3000 series at $12,636, only 25.5 horsepower. And then also from Keel's, a John Deere, Z960M commercials, zero turn at $9,527.98. So it looks like the bigger horsepower engine, which would be the Ferris, would serve the purposes best for the highway department, coming in at $9,839.
Yep.
As far as breaking down the costs, I don't think we could use chips for this.
Well, as you were talking, 10 years, wouldn't get a list.
It's not really highway, it's, but we could try. But I would think that.
You'll get it from chips.
No.
They're pretty strict in their applications of the spending.
So we may want to look at, you know, maybe a little bit of water and then we have a capital account for highway 511 zero point, whatever it is.
Two, four, four, no. She just put six grand into it? I know, I was thinking it's voucher patch.
But these things, I think, you know, we do, I don't know when the last time we bought the zero turn must have been.
Six years?
Six or seven years. I was thinking it's taken seven, so they could certainly use it.
Yeah, so like you said, that budget season, we didn't totally budget for the purchase but I think between the funds we have, we can afford it. Like Brent's suggesting, I think capital fund and water would be where it should come from. And then, so what we could do is move forward tonight, if everybody's okay. The numbers we're talking, the 9,839 is the price for the Ferris. And Brent identified it, I'll restate it for Ari tonight. It was, it's like a Ferris is F E R R I S, then it's an IS3200 is the model.
It says a 61.
It's a quote number, Ari, 133027, which is indicated to be in compliance with contract prices. So I'd move that we authorize purchase and for the highway department's use of a Ferris 37 horsepower IS3200 for $9,839. Funding to be appropriated from the capital fund and then the water. Water fund.
Highway capital fund?
Highway capital fund.
I'll give you the number on that real quick.
And that's from Conway's, right?
Yeah.
So it'll be budget line 511 0.2, maintenance of street, capital outlay. We currently have budgeted $14,000. I mean, if we really wanted to, we could use some of this scrap metal stuff too. I mean, last year we kind of doubled what we had and that was rolled into general fund. We have about $650 now in there. So anyway, just a thought.
Yeah, we just gave them, they bought that tamper from, from scrap funds. But, all right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Dan, I'll be happy with that. Then related, related to highway, in the spring season, we were in executive session periodically talking about the new collective bargaining agreement in line with authorization and direction from the board. We resolved it and we had signed that MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the union. And what that was, they, they took the high points of the discussions and we signed that, which essentially, we don't have to do any retroactive pay or anything, we got that done on purpose to comply with the June 1 renewal season. It's a three-year contract that we're working on and that in essence resolved the contract issues. It was essentially, you might recall the details, I don't want to go into them now, but we went back and forth, deleted some and got a common raise rate and moved forward is the real change. And what the union did then, they took the one-page MOU, which we signed and then incorporated those changes, they appear in the various articles. They broke them out and put them in the contract. So I would just like to affirm that when we did the MOU, we were in concurrence and that was, we were in agreement on what we were offering to the highway union. And I went through this and it's fine, it's, they just, like I said, pulled the things to where they had to be. And they're in there. So I just, for the record, just want an affirmation that the board negotiated in executive session, came to agreement with the union and had an MOU and now the MOU is incorporated into the contract. So that's a lot of words there. Ari, do you need any help with that or?
Good.
Oh, you're good, okay. And like I said, it's a three-year contract, so it won't have to be worked on until March of 2021. So it's, it's the working document right now. So Ari, what do you have there, something to read back that, I guess, I could reword it so the board can vote on something. I would move that the MOU agreement that was signed back in the spring before the contract expired, that we acknowledged that the details have been conveyed to the formal contract and that the board wanted to prove the MOU, acknowledged and approved the raises and other benefits that were included. And they are now incorporated in the contract, which is completed and that's our document. So is there a second? Any other discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I put, let's see, we talked when Charlie was up about NIPA, New York Power Authority, and the, the next step for us in the LED streetlight program. I had a form out in front of me, let me just see where I put it. Essentially, we could whimsically recall the 47-page contract that we talked about. And then this essentially is saying that if we move ahead with NIPA, we acknowledge that there's that $7,000 fee for them to design and, let me read it here out now, let's see. By signing below, the village of Red Hook authorizes NIPA to proceed with the next step of the energy efficiency project, which is another name for the LED project, which is to prepare the final design report and conduct bids for materials and installation labor. When this work is completed, you will receive a customer project commitment for your review and signature. Should you decide not to proceed with the implementation of the project, the village of Red Hook agrees to reimburse NIPA for all costs incurred for the development, design and bidding of the project. The cost of developing the design and for bidding the materials and labor is estimated to be $7,405. NIPA requires the implementation contractor to provide complete documentation as to how it arrived at the charge and the NIPA, and NIPA will be transparent and share this information with you. The village will have adequate time to review the charges and ask questions. If the village moves forward with NIPA to construction, the cost of design and bidding is included with the total management fee for the installation of the project. Conversely, if you choose not to move forward, the costs will be due upon delivery of the initial customer implementation contract. So if we move forward, the cost is included in the total management fee, so it sounds like we don't have to pay it till later on down the road is.
And I presume it would be incorporated in the, the pay schedule that allows us to.
Right, yeah.
Draw on their lens.
Because I know they had a conference call lately that occurred while I was on vacation. Were you able to jump on that like 10 days ago or something?
I wasn't.
Okay, yeah. I don't think there's anything new, it was just restating. But I think we're all convinced it's going to be their thing to do. So I would offer a motion that the board authorized the mayor to sign to NIPA authorization to proceed to continue the LED streetlight conversion project. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? One in favor? Aye. Did you vote aye?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I voted no, no.
All right, so we'll sign that thing. Now I buried my agenda. Just some general comment for me. Today, I had a resident come in and they were talking about the parking in front of the post office. And apparently, there's a flare of postal employees parking in front of the post office. It seems like it's probably more the rural root guys who are coming in to get their gear and whatever they have to do and then get their truck. And sometimes they leave their personal car right in front of the post office. So it's, it's not customers, it's employees. And this resident said that they talked to the local postmaster and they were told that no, it's, they can't tell the employees where to park based on some rules and regulations, which I don't know if I get that. But looking at our code, it looks like our two-hour parking comes north on North Broadway to right about St. John's Street on both sides, you know, which would be like a Ben's Pizza on the one side and the rest north is, is, it's not restricted. You can recall, it's really hard to park on the northbound side there because you have scanline cleaner and then it's not too much room, but southbound people do use that. When you go to the post office, wait in there 15 minutes the most, you know, as far as, so it seemed like we should consider, not for tonight, but I was thinking probably just continuing our two-hour parking limit up there, you know, something to keep the employees from parking for a day.
Is there a place for the employees to park?
Well, that's the thing, remember when Baywright first bought the old CVS, all of a sudden our parking lot was filling up and it was the postal workers parking here, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but I don't notice that trend anymore. I think they're going somewhere, but I don't know where they go.
Hadn't we a couple of years ago when Necco's was an issue, talking about 15-minute parking in front of there? Can we talk about 15-minute parking in front of the post office?
We could. I know there was some, how would you say, equality issues there as far as if we put 15 somewhere?
I mean, the issue, I think, what we were discussing there was, you know, people would park, not necessarily to patronize that one business, but perhaps park and walk around the village so that you're kind of discouraging. So you don't want to make an exclusive parking area for the post office or any business.
Because we weighed it, but like I said, we don't, I don't plan to vote outside. We take a code change like we did for the bus stops, it's a little bit of a rigmarole to get in, but it's. yeah, it's, it seems like the two-hour just extending would be logical, you know, it's...
Could we offer the post office the opportunity to try and resolve it themselves, you know, maybe discuss with some of the local business owners that have a few more parking places than they typically use, to maybe have their people park there, as opposed to having to go through and then implementing the two-hour parking throughout.
I mean, there's some parking areas that are underutilized here in the village. One in direction of North Broadway, um, one South Broadway, one East Market. So there's, there's, there's some opportunity within, you know, a couple of blocks distance of the post office that perhaps the post office may want to pursue and talk to those property owners.
Behind the old Silver Lake is like wide open. I mean, during the day, there, there might be ten cars back there, and you could park thirty or forty.
Well, I could do a letter to the postmaster saying, come to our attention, we need to address this, and, um, we could offer to meet him, and... I'm not sure Todd Baywright is as strict on his, on the lot as he was when he first bought it, but it seemed like this person that came in today was noticing our problems.
There are also some people that, that, it appears that the post office is getting some subs from time to time. Um, I, I had an issue. I didn't know, but something was to be delivered. It wasn't delivered for some reason or other, and they go, oh, we had a sub. He didn't know what was going on. So the subs may just park wherever they can get a parking place, so if we could get them maybe to direct, you know, there's some places here, maybe if Mr. Geek says Firehouse Plaza, we can, I can pony up five spots back there, and I don't know. It just seems like, as Brent said, there are some, some underused lots in the general, you know, business area that might, might work.
I don't know if it's me, but it seems like even the street, it seemed like we had the same delivery people for years. Now it's different faces, and it's like, uh, I don't know if they've changed their employment model, or what it is. Do you notice it here? Is it different people coming into the building, or?
Yeah, um, and one of the, one of the people that comes regularly is a temporary substitute, so...
Yes, that's why I'm making it worse, that they don't know the place, you know, they're getting like, where do we park? All right, we'll do a kind of friendly note to the postmaster. What else we got? Let's see. We did some correspondence, um, a couple of years ago. The village participated in a opioid drug awareness program. It was offered at the high school. RPD helped, and it seemed like it's time to rethink that, maybe offering another one. So I did write down to the county, and we're getting some, uh, response from their health department, which has the fancier name. I'll have to look it up, to be honest with you. It's, uh, bear with me a second here. He has Jean-Marie Nyber, Coordinator of Prevention Services, Dutchess County Department of Behavior and Community Health. That's the new name for the Department of Health that we refer to a lot. We haven't quite put together what we'll do, but it seems like once a month, we're hearing about an overdose or an Narcan save, and then an overdose, you know, so... Not that we'd be the main drivers, but if we could entice and invite professionals to come back up here and put on a seminar, I think it'd be worth everybody's while. So I've been copying the, um, our police department, and then it would not just be, like, it wouldn't just be RPD. The one they did before had professionals ranging from M.D.s to recovering addicts to parents who lost children, and it was pretty meaningful. It's just how to get it to the right audience is the big thing, so working on that a little bit. As far as general correspondence, I had something, um, it doesn't directly involve us, fortunately, but one of our big properties, the chocolate factory, they've periodically contested their assessment. And as we all know, the assessing unit for the Village of Red Hook is the Town of Red Hook Assessor, so we don't go and establish property values with anybody on our staff. So, um, the owner has petitioned the court to ask for some relief on the taxes. And I confirmed with the town today, and our lawyer, it's not a lawsuit, it's a Articles, uh, judicial review under Article seven of the Real Property Tax Law. The town has confirmed they have it. The town confirmed they assigned it to a firm, which I didn't recognize, Victor Myers out of Albany. It's not one of their local firms that they use. And what the petitioner is asking for is essentially reduction in the assessed value. So to, I don't see any direct, um, things we have to do, but I thought, again, I'd generate a letter to, letter to the town, just confirming my conversation with them and saying, we understand that you've reported it, or turned it over to your counsel, their counsel. It's probably one of the benefits of a shared service for us there. It's, um, we don't have to get too active on that. We do have, um, speaking of following some town issues, the Controller's Office was finishing up an audit visit to the Town of Red Hook, and they've now come to our office. I think they interviewed Cindy Friday or Thursday last week. I was hoping to meet them today, but they never showed up, I guess. I didn't see them anywhere. So, um, it's not a bad thing, and we all studied that audit report, and we've made a lot of changes here. I know Steve out there, we used to circulate that amongst each other, and, uh, we follow a lot of the recommendations they give other villages, so we'll see what they have for us, but, um, so if you see that person, it's, you all might have seen, we fortunately have our own audit teams in here periodically. You'll see them set up at right across here with multiple screens and doing our audits, so our staff is used to the process, but it's a lot of work, because they get asked to pull documents all the time, and it's, uh... We'll see how long the guy's going to be here, but I'll fill you in when I meet with the person. I think we've hit the points I had on my lists, and, uh, we do need to go to executive session, but as is our custom, we will, uh, entertain public comment, public questions, and we would ask George, if you do have one, or Steve, that you take the microphone, so we can best hear you.
It's working. Um, my question has to do with sewage. I, I looked at the plan you have for the routes last week, last week, and noticed that the ones coming down the back behind CVS, going down the alleyway behind our houses. And I know, while it's not our property, we are deeded fourteen-foot alley, uh, fourteen-foot wide alley extending westerly through all those lots, five houses. I'm wondering if it affects us, because I don't know how your easements work. It's, you know, it's not our property, but we have a deeded right to it, access. Whether they should have then put it something in our, or our deeds also, indicating it's not only a, a, a use, but it's also noting the easement the village has for the sewer line that runs beneath it.
So that comes out that back entrance to the old IGA, you mean?
It goes, it runs right, well, it starts by the back entrance, and it goes up to the Elmendorf, but not including the Elmendorf.
Oh, so it's going like west, west?
And it doesn't go right to the end, but that's where it, that's the line is, uh, was projected to be running through that alleyway. Now, I don't know whether it's just beyond that fourteen-foot or in that fourteen-foot, that area behind it.
What I could do, tomorrow, I'm meeting with our lawyers. I could bring that up, so you're, you're thinking...
Just to clarify it, because if necessary, it probably should be noted on all our deeds, but it's not our property, but we have a right to it, and it should be, if people change house ownership, it's not going to be on our deed. It's just going to say right-of-way, uh, we, use, use, uh, right of use, I guess it is, the way, it says use of an alleyway.
So if we pulled your deed, would we see this right-of-use? That's your deed?
I highlight it.
You can have this copy, George?
Could I take this with me tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be good. I'll bring this down there.
Just, just to clarify, I don't know if, if, if it should be deeds issued with that notification on it to, to the property owners along that line. Kind of a weird situation, because we don't own the property, but we have deeded access.
But you, you have a deeded access right-of-way over that strip.
Right, and CVS had to redesign their entire parking lot to, to accomplish that.
I would assume legally, so long as no aspect of the sewer easement interferes with the access...
Right.
Then your, your access right-of-way would remain intact.
Right, and maybe indicate it on our deeds that it's there underneath, beneath that, because I don't know how it works with an easement. You don't own the property, you just have access to the property.
Right, yeah.
CVS is actually the owner of the property.
Right, yeah. But right now, isn't there a fence that runs like KZE in that direction you were talking about? Is that going behind your house, too? What happens?
There are individual, it, it probably owns on those fences.
So you have a different fence than the one by KZE?
Uh, well, what do you mean? Like, my house and the next one over, it's, everybody seems to have a stockade fence-type design. I want to update mine, because mine's fallen down.
Yeah.
But some of the places don't have access to their septic system, which is what the purpose of that is for, so they can access it through the back. They can go out, if they have to pump it, they can pump from the front. They can bring a hose around, but if you got to dig it out, there's no alleyways to go to the back, so they have to come in from the back of the property. So some of the gates do open, although most of them are starting to fall down.
Okay, well, that's a good point. I'll bring this tomorrow, and, yeah, because we wouldn't want to impede, and it doesn't seem like it would, like Charlie's hinting, I think it's...
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's, again, it's, it might be just a legal question about it, but again, it's, you know, it is on, in our, it's listed on our deed, and, but it's not our property. So it'll be on the property that CVS owns, showing you have a deed to, uh, right-of-way through that.
Yeah, the reverse. Okay, good point.
Exactly, that's it.
That's it?
Okay.
Two questions. Uh, on this bus stop, is that for both Bard and the Dutchess County Loop?
It will be the Loop. Uh, we've had, I don't know if you're at the meeting or not, but we've had conversations with the Loop people, which they don't even call the Loop anymore. It's just Dutchess County Transit, like Department of Health has a new name. And they indicated they would change, and we would want them to change. They just need to get the precise GPS coordinate, because they said that is that exact on their phone application, just something that the hundred-foot switch would do it. So I said, okay, well, well, it's not, they told me that. I was like, really? I said, it's like eighty feet maybe from where the little sign is, but we would probably put that there, that little emblematic, like an icon sign. I think it's four inches square on the pole over there. We'll pull that down here, too.
I mean, the other night, they stopped in the middle of the road and...
Yeah, well, it's...
Caused the traffic.
Again, yeah.
The grid stopped.
Yeah, but that is our, oops, sorry, sorry, lady, killing you. Um, that is our plan, though, to have them pull, and we've been talking to them, yes.
Okay, another question is, uh, back to when I was on the board, my usual question. Of all the time that the, uh, how much time did the police spend on foot patrol?
Well, on a monthly report, I don't, there's no way there's a lot of time. The only extrapolation I can make is when I do two parking tickets, to me, it implies they're walking, but I don't have the time to punch out or anything.
I mean, it's summertime. They, they could be out there, they should be out there on foot patrol and getting, getting introduced to the people.
Point taken.
Uh, one other question. Last, last meeting, George brought up, uh, since I'm now playing, will be a planning board member and everything, are the, are you going to provide the boards with a, uh, map of the sewer, uh, goes into the back of the buildings and everything?
Well, I hesitate. I don't know the answer, to be honest with you. There's a huge chart that George came and looked at that's available to anybody. I don't know that any one board member would get their own set of that. I think it'd be a common set, you know?
Well, a common set.
Yeah.
Because of the last application, it involved a, uh, garage in the back...
Yeah.
Of the, and touched upon their property, so I would think the sewer's gone down that way.
Yeah, I think it would be like the water program. We need to know where the pipes are, so, so planning and zoning would need to know where these are, and it'd probably be, in the end, it'd be an as-built, which will probably be a little different from even what he looked at, you know, there's probably some revisions that'll happen between now and construction, so, but that's a good point. Here we go.
Okay.
Any general comment from the board before we go to executive session? As is our custom audience and camera audience, we go to executive, we leave the, this room for a bit, and then we come back. I don't anticipate being gone a long time, but, um, one never knows, and, uh, it's, uh, but I would guess ten minutes, you know, so we will be back, and generally, we come back and unless something came up, we would just move forward, but you're all welcome to stay. Camera, if you could turn off for ten minutes, I'll make a motion first. I would move that the board head for executive session to deal with personal matters involving the employment and determination of a particular individual. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it's nine, eight-twenty-seven, eight-twenty-eight? All right. Board is back from executive session at like nine forty-seven. I would entertain a motion that we remove ourselves from executive session.
Four-seven?
Oh, sorry, eight forty-seven. Thanks. I'd make a motion that we remove ourselves from executive session back to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're back in regular. So we had our public comment. There is a packet of vouchers going around. Has, has the board on the left been able to look at them and...
Yep.
Get through them? And, uh, I don't know if Mr. Trapp, if you want to look at them before you roll out the door?
Yes, sir.
And anything else from the board on any other matters? Hearing none, we would let Mr... What's that?
It's the E.K. Broiler time.
Okay. We would ask the deputy mayor to move the meeting toward conclusion.
Did you make a motion to pay bills after audit?
No, I didn't. Thank you, sir. I talked about the vouchers, but I don't think I put that statement. I'll correct my part of it and, uh, state that, um, as they're being signed, I would also move that we pay bills after the audit is completed. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, um, Mr. Brent, would you like to?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.